Um, yeah. That'll be the first side of it. Um, um. Okay.
You know, they mind too.
Okay, good evening. We'll call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of December 5th, 2024 into session. The first matter is the roll call? Sure, no problem.
We can also let Heather set up too, since she's going to be taking the minutes.
That was an impressive entry.
Okay, thank you Chair Clow. I'll go ahead and start with the roll call. And welcome to the Planning Commission, Commissioner Capek, we'll move forward to talking with you more. And starting with the roll call, Commissioner Reland?
Here.
Commissioner Clow?
Present.
Commissioner Lawrence is excused. Commissioner White?
Commissioner Smith.
Oh, Commissioner Smith, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Morando, another commissioner.
Here.
And Commissioner Capek, here. And is Commissioner McKee expected, or is she not arriving? I think she's excused. Oh, she's excused. Thank you.
Here. Okay, next we'll proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mr. Morando, please lead us. Right.
Next, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Staff have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, yes, we'd like to move item H, which is matters communication from the staff prior to the new business, so that we can provide a presentation on water from Alan Hook.
Any changes from the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
As amended.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Karen.
Yes.
Commissioner Clow?
I don't vote.
Okay, I thought this was approval of the agenda, so. Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Capek? Thank you. It's been approved.
And next on the agenda is approval of the minutes, but I understand they just got posted and there appears to be some errors in them, so Dan, you have a suggestion in terms of how we respond those?
Madam Chair, if I could address the commission, my recommendation would be that a commission member moved to reject the minutes as drafted and postpone a vote to the next meeting.
A motion, please.
Motion to reject and postpone the next meeting.
Second.
A roll call.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Capek?
Yes.
Thank you. It has been approved.
Thank you. And before we move to the water presentation, perhaps staff could introduce our new commissioner, Piper Capek, and maybe Piper could say a little bit too.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'd like to introduce Piper Capek. Piper Capek was planning commission, I believe, what, 2016, 2017? Really helped out with the planning commission while she was here. We really, we're glad she's back. She's going to bring a lot of expertise to this, to this body. I think you're all going to enjoy her. And if you can provide a little bit of yourself, that'd be great.
I'm super happy to be back. Been gone for about six years, and doing the planning commission was something that and enjoyed doing for the community and in the community when I'm not here. I own backward people in Santa Fe, so I'm in the restaurant business last 22 years. The six-year-old son I'm raising, you know, as it were. So, happy to be back. See some faces that are new and some that are old and meet the commissioners. Thank you.
Well, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to the, to item number eight A. The City of Santa Fe Water Development Utilizing the Water Bank Process, a presentation by Alan Hook.
There we go. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Great. We're just going to set up a PowerPoint presentation.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, sorry. Swell. Well, thank you. It's okay. As they're setting up, I just want to, you know, add for commissioners and the audience, like, this is, Alan's presentation is part of an ongoing series of kind of educational items that we're bringing to the Planning Commission and to public through these public hearings on various aspects of the development review process and the components of Chapter 14, and how they, you know, apply to, you know, items that come before this commission. Thank you.
All right, so again, Alan Hook, Water Resource Coordinator for the Water Division. So my kind of role in integrating with the development process in conjunction with our engineering section is just reviewing all the water offset requirements that come through with new development around Santa Fe. So with that, I'm presenting on City of Santa Fe Water Development Utilizing the Water Bank Process. All right. Role of the water bank is to ensure adequate water for increased water use, and it's tied to new construction. So it's demand-side water conservation resulting in our demand capacities, so being able to provide the capacity of the water supply with the utility. Supply side is bringing in new water rights allows for our increasing of the water supply. And the way water rights come in is into our Buckman wellfield. So if you think of groundwater as our savings account, that's where we're bringing in new water rights to expand our water supply. Whereas our surface water supplies from the watershed, our two reservoirs, the Buckman direct diversion off the Rio Grande, those are kind of like our daily renewable supplies. So that's kind of our cash account, I guess you'd say. So, the water bank is based on an ordinance 2016-39. It's approved water budget for development project. The applicant shall obtain water through water rights transfer program, which is in our Chapter 25 or Water Conservation Credits Program to meet the development water budget according to specified criteria, and I'll get into what that criteria is. So the water bank in action is really to offset the demand of developers, and they could either bring in new water rights into the bank to offset the demand. So you're talking about Rio Grande Basin pre-1907 water rights, typically that comes from a farmer or somebody else that potentially has a groundwater well. Or if it's under threshold, which I'll get into the details of thresholds, they could pay offset fee to offset their demand. So we are, using that fee, we would be going out to purchase water rights on the open market. And then affordable housing also use city-owned water rights. So those are previously purchased water rights that the city owns outright. And so, basically, this is an idea that started in 2009, and the idea was incentivizing more water-efficient construction, i.e. development. So growth in water, again, water offsets. So continuing, the city's continued efforts of water conservation has become nationally recognized. So our Water Conservation Office has done a really good job of doing offsetting the conserve, or our new demand with conservation efforts. Rain barrels, rebate programs, that really helps with the smaller development to offset with that demand with conservation. Again, we use a dual-track approach to growth management related to water demand. Water conservation at home, work, school, other places progressively scaled rate pricing that happened in 2008 has really kept the demand down. And then again, transfer of water rates. So new residential commercial development must offset the anticipated water to be used through the Water Conservation Credits or through a transfer of water rights from the middle Rio Grande. And again, this has been proven to be effective. I kind of had a footnote there from the Land Use Urban Design Study. It's been effective management for growth and conservation in the development process. Also, since 1995, the city's overall annual water consumption decreased 25% while the population increased over 33%. So again, that kind of shows the success of the conservation effort. So development water budget process, kind of making this simplified with visual effects here. You have a developer on the left. They're bringing in their proposed project to the land use department. So they're bringing in their, their plans. They're eventually filling out what we call the utility service application, which includes that development water budget. Water staff determines or approves a development water budget based on what the expected demand is on the system. So they have to determine their water usage for the new construction, for example, single-family residential or suburb or multifamily dwelling. We're having a lot more of those. Determine water uses based also on their landscape irrigation budget. So you're doing internal domestic use as well as outdoor irrigation demand. Subtract the water usage if the case they have affordable housing waivers or low-priced dwelling units, and then you calculate your total development water budget. We also add in a 9.8 contingency fee. Reason for that is non-revenue water loss, fire flows, other impacts to our full infrastructure and the transmission and distribution system. See if my graphics work here. So the column on the left, top left, is type of use. First row is single-family house. So these are all built out long time ago in conjunction with the land use department. So we actually, this table is like two pages of different land use criteria. So single-family could be a restaurant, commercial, large retail. Then you look at the second column, and that tells you how many acre feet, because us in the Water Division, we talk in acre feet, units. So if you don't know what an acre foot is, if I'm a farmer and I flood my one acre field, and it goes one foot down, it's approximately 325,851 gallons. So these are, you know, as you could see, percentages of an acre foot. Rarely is it a full acre foot unless you're talking maybe schools or parks. Gymnasiums get up there because of showers, so on and so forth. So if we look at the project and we have a fee there, if it's under thresholds, and again, I'll get to thresholds. It's under thresholds, so smaller development. The governing body at the time decided like, we're not going to ask you if you're doing accessory dwelling unit to bring in water rights, because it's pretty overbearing. It's a very long process. You need to find a lawyer, bring your water rights, transfer it through the state engineer process just for accessory dwelling unit. We're going to charge you at a cost of 15,000, or I'm sorry, $16,600 for acre foot. So that's what the fee is broken down into. And then you'll see, you know, by units, it's a dwelling unit, is it 10,000 square feet? For a restaurant, it's per seat, so on and so forth. So above threshold, just to give you an idea, so the breakdown by project type, you see that table there, commercial. If it's less than five acre feet, they could just pay the fee, depending on how their water budget calculated. If it's over five acre feet, you have to bring in pre-1907 water rights. So that's the breakdown. If it's mixed use, so that's both residential as well as non-residential use, it's seven and a half. And then residential, it's up to 10 acre feet. So this above threshold, it's, again, as I mentioned, it's a long process, because you have to bring in recognized water rights for the middle Rio Grande. It involves the Mexico Office of the State Engineer. It's more onerous, it's expensive. We do not approve your water budget development until those water rights have been recognized and transferred through the process, and that we can actually bring them into the Buckman wellfield. So that takes a lot of time. And, you know, sometimes unfortunately, developers don't realize they need to start this process early before they're ready to go for a building permit. So below threshold, again, if it's below threshold, you look at your budget, you compare it to the table, your costs and the total budget. It's again, commercial under five acre feet. Say it's four acre feet, multiply that by 16,600, that's what you owe us. We give you an invoice and you pay it, and we give you what's called a designation certificate, and you're on your way to get to a building permit. It's administrative wholly by the city, so no state agencies, so potentially it should be faster in the process. We're trying to get a little more automated and integrate with Intergov and integrate more with land use in the process so developers could get through this and get on their way to both getting their building permit, and then eventually with us actually getting their meters installed in an efficient way. So all offsets from the water bank must be paid prior to the approval of construction building permit and also what we call the meter install form. There have been times when we know, you know, they're on their way, the invoice and the payment, and we approve maybe a building permit because subsequently they're coming in to actually pay before they get their meter installs. And we do have an inspection process internally with the Water Division. So before they can get those meter installs, a lot of times the inspectors in the field will say, hey Alan, have they paid their offset fees? We also have engineering fees, like utility expansion charges that also have to be paid in parallel to water, water offset fees. So even if you're an accessory dwelling unit, you kind of have two fees to pay. The offset fee, as well as your engineering fees and the fees for the meters to be installed. Sometimes people come in and they think, hey, I already paid engineering and I already paid you those Water Division fees. And I say, well, you also have offset fees, or vice versa. So that's kind of the communication we'd like to make more efficient, hopefully in the future through our City Water Division website. So current growth paradigm, so development equals increased water demand in Santa Fe. So it's supported by Water Resource Perspective by number one, conservation, obviously. And then also, you know, just the need to have to purchase water rights on the Rio Grande. So the pumping of Buckman wellfield impacts on the Rio Grande, we have to offset that. So that's why we request those water rights from new development come into the Buckman wellfield. Because that's, if we lose, let's say, the watershed to a wildfire, don't have the reservoirs, or same thing happens on the Rio Grande and we can't get San Juan Chama water, we're going to really start pumping that Buckman wellfield even more than we would the city wellfield. We wouldn't sustainably be able to exist with water supply just on the city wellfield. And I could show you that here. Our annual demand is about 8,800, just under 9,000 acre feet. So as you can see, the city wellfield, we have water rights for 3,500 acre feet. That's not enough. If we turn to the Buckman wellfields, you know, we, we have more than 15,500 acre feet for the Buckman wellfield, but in reality, the sustainable rate is more like in this number of the 2,000 acre feet before we start having impacts, and we have to draw on those water rights that we have saved up. And there will be a presentation next week on kind of our Water 2100 plan. And that's really talking about how are we planning for this? And it incorporates, you know, potentially using reuse through the Buckman wellfield. So it's almost like circular. All of the San Juan Chama project, which is federal contract water that we bring in, there's a certain percentage we could reuse, take back to the Rio Grande, and then Bureau of Reclamation would allow us to bring in more of that water back into our water supply. So the Buckman direct diversion, or what we call San Juan Chama project, right now it's 5230, so we have more than enough with our water rights, 5,040 from the Santa Fe River, the watershed, 5230 from the San Juan Chama projects through the BDD, so it's, you know, well over 10,000. So right now, we do 90% from those two supplies and about 10% for the Buckman wellfield or our city wellfield. And again, it's, we're lucky, it's a very sustainable supply that way. We're, we're using renewable sources to supply that. But if, again, we lose either of those sources, we're going to really have to, you know, rely on groundwater. And we don't feel that with the impacts of the Rio Grande and the offsets that we have to provide, it would be sustainable for, you know, a very long period until we're starting to have a long-term impacts on the ground, regional groundwater. So with that, I stand for any questions that you may have on water development and the water bank.
I have a question. Is it hard to find a pre-1902 Rio Grande Basin water rights to purchase?
Developers are still finding them, and we have what's called the water bank itself. So previously, even previous to 2005, when the water rights requirement had occurred before we created the water bank, there's about 300 acre feet right now of private developments that have applied for water rights and brought them into the Buckman wellfield with the city as co-applicants. So there are still some water rights in the bank that can be utilized for development. Now, some of them are owned by development companies like PulteGroup, and they're ready, when they get their developments to go, to then transfer them right away. So having them in the bank in the Buckman wellfield is a lot easier, because all you have to do is go to the state engineer's office, get the $25 fee, do a change of ownership to the city. Now, we tried to buy a water right for 29 acre feet south of Albuquerque, and it got protested by the tribes and also middle Rio Grande Conservancy District. Tribes are trying to establish their priority rights. MRJCD is just concerned that was that potentially going to affect their total portfolio of water rights? So we signed that contract two years ago. It'll be two years ago next week. We're right now going through a hearing process, which will probably take us through next August.
With the state engineer?
Yes, with the state engineer. So us buying outright water rights, it's, it pulls up a red flag for all the stakeholders on the middle Rio Grande. But we still are seeing developers being able to buy and purchase water rights and transfer them.
Any other questions from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Capek?
On the last chart there, you had that we have a total of about 15,000 in the right, the rights, and you said, did you say we're using currently about 8,500?
8,900, I was.
So is that the amount of cushion that you all like to have as far as what's in between what we use and what you have? Or is there some sort of calculation on that, or when we go more?
So that's what 2100 is doing. It's looking at demand all the way through 2100, like what is potentially our future demand? In other words, our population growth, what is our demand with climate change and looking at like 20% impacts on our surface water supplies? So reduction of 20%? You know, will it go linearly very quickly, or will it kind of sustain the same rate? And so given that, how are we going to cover that? When, at what point are we going to hit shortages? Right now, our director Jesse Roach, he's done a lot of this research with our staff. It looks like well beyond 2050, we have enough water rights for all of this and sustainable supply. But if any point, it doesn't hold that if any one point in time, we lose, like say, the reservoirs through a wildfire more than five years, then that, that, that buffer we have is going to be really tight. So given, you know, like, good news, positive news with what we have for water rights, with the potential of using more treated effluent for exchange, we would have even more potential. But you want, you don't want to take it for granted, because if you lose one of those supplies, then it really hits us like on peak demand in June.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith?
Having listened through all this and as a relative newcomer to this, could you go back and, and visit the term of threshold and what is above and below? And what the, what the different variables are there?
Yeah, I'll start with just this one, above threshold. So commercial is five acre feet, and then mixed use is, you know, say you have a commercial business at the bottom floors, and then you have apartment buildings above that, that's seven and a half. And then residential is 10 acre feet. So residential includes, like, you know, subdivision developments all the way to, you know, a couple of homes that you're doing on a lot split. So there's a, there's a variance. So there's a, there's a variance of range and so those are the thresholds. And again, if I could go back to the chart. So if you calculate, you know, you've got point one five, but if you do about a hundred and twenty homes, you're going to be well over that threshold. So that's kind of how we determine that. And, you know, a lot of times I try to rely on the developer representative or the landlord themselves and say, well, what, what is it that you're going to do? I mean, look at this chart. But we also have what's called an alternative water budget. So if they feel like they could be more efficient with their water use than this, we'll allow it. We also ask, you know, they'll just make some pie in sky estimates. Give us some actual information, like another development, like another apartment building complex that was more efficient than our standards. And our standards are old, I mean, they're over a decade old. So we do, I mean, I would say we do need to update them and that's something that we're looking at in the future. If you want to compare it to other cities, they've sometimes done a flat fee. They just charge you a flat fee for residential or they charge you a flat fee for commercial. We're kind of looking into that, but it depends if we want to do a flat fee based on the usage type or how much water is going through the meter. Because if you do it by meter size, you know, some might have to pay more than they actually would use. Some would actually use more than they would have to, than they would be required to pay. So flat fees could be efficient for administration, but you know, some, some lose, some win.
Any other questions? Commissioner Wieland?
So in the late nineties, early two thousands, we saw one of the worst droughts Santa Fe has had, I believe it was the nineteen fifties. And in that time, the city implemented a lot of safeguards for residents, watering and so forth. Are those still in play if we ran into another situation where we're running into water issues?
Yes, so there's still, you know, out of that came the three days of watering, sort of parts of our code. Out of that came, so the, so we did sort of restrictive water conservation measures as, at the same time incentives. So you know, you get incentives on your bill, you get a credit on your bill for rain barrels. You get a credit on your bill for if you're doing French drains or any kind of active stormwater usage around the outside watering. We have also sort of integrated this pilot because it's called a water resource indicator. So we're kind of trying to use that seasonally. So if in the spring, we don't have a great snowpack runoff, do we still have enough water supply to still tell the public like, you know, it's a hot spring going into summer, please conserve. But we are not at the point where we're desperate for water and we can't water the parks. But there are times when you have an Indian summer or it's very, you know, like it's just, we didn't get a monsoon, let's say. And there's more and more demand building. We've seen this a couple of times, like two thousand eighteen was a really dry extreme drought year. We had really high demand in September, surprisingly higher than even June. And so that's when we can, right now, we have emergency measures to restrict water supply, especially, you know, if parks, we just need them to use less. We'll start saying to people, no more washing your car. Start increasing time of day restrictions for water conservation. So we do have that set in code, but we're trying to be a little more proactive about how does seasonality affect our supply? And that also could affect behavior of our constituents.
Any other questions? Not, thank you very much. And now we'll move on to new business and we'll call case number twenty twenty four dash nine three one eight or forty four hundred Hart Road Development Plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just need to get set up really quickly. Good evening, Chair Clow and Commissioners. My name is Carly Vendetti. I'm a senior planner with the Land Use Department. This evening, I'm presenting to you the proposed development plan for case twenty twenty four nine three one eight, forty four hundred Hart Road, colloquially known as Project Hobbs in this case. Really quickly, just an overview, the agent this evening is NM Land Solutions, the owner and applicant, Ege Devco. The scope of this project, as I said, is a proposed development plan for a sixty two thousand two hundred square foot warehouse distribution building on a ten point seven three acre lot located within the Hart Business Park. This is where Hart Road meets Aviation Drive. Like I said, it's part of the larger Hart Business Park. This area was annexed by the city in two thousand eight by ordinance two thousand six dash two five and planted in August of two thousand eight. It's created eleven lots for light industrial uses. There are several conditions of approval set by our development review team for this proposed development plan. Drainage report shall contain a discussion of the required volumes as well as an explanation of why the curve numbers are the same for all basins. An approved agreement to construct and dedicate will be required for new fire service. An approved water plan is required for all new public water infrastructure and fire services. Separate meter for landscaping irrigation is required with a backflow preventer installed. Development shall comply with International Fire Code as of twenty twenty one. The height of the building shall be illustrated and there shall be twenty six foot fire lane widths to comply with the standards of buildings over thirty feet. This proposed building is thirty three feet tall. And finally, the final conclusion here, seven, was set by the current planning division, requiring an outdoor break area with picnic tables, smoker's bench and shaded seating for employees. Due to the location of this, it is further away from a lot of amenities and places for employees to take breaks. So moving on to the analysis of land use. Current zoning is I one, light industrial. Surrounding uses include other industrial uses such as storage, warehouse and other distribution uses. There's been a lot of activity in this recent, recently in this area. The future land use map, which you can see up on the screen, designates this as industrial. That purple space above it is business park. Just in this case, it's not an industrial business park. General plan also designates this as an industrial area. So as of September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, the agent facilitated an ENN. While members of the public chose not to attend, the meeting was recorded and available to members of the public upon their request. This ENN on the twenty fourth of September and tonight's public hearing were sufficiently noticed to adjacent properties via mail and notice poster. Moving quickly along to the proposed dimensional standards of this project. If approved, the development plan will align with adjacent uses and would not create any non-conformities. All future development on this site must comply with chapter fourteen and all subsequent amendments. An I one district in this case would allow for a height of sixty five feet. The proposed project comes in at thirty three, as I said previously. Setbacks are in compliance along both Aviation Drive and Hart Road. It meets a fifteen foot setback. There are no side setbacks required. Open space in this case is actually reduced due to passive stormwater harvesting systems on site. So they're down to a requirement of thirty percent. They exceed that with forty five percent. That is two hundred and nine thousand square feet with some change of four hundred and forty one. Finally, on to lot coverage, they could go up to fifty percent maximum. They are only at thirteen percent in this case, well under their allowed fifty percent. Moving along to architecture, the proposed warehouse is proposed to be constructed of concrete panels with a textured finish painted adobe beige. As you can see here, there are a few building features, including blue fabric awnings, loading docks, several windows and a metal canopy. This project is well within their point threshold. They're above one fifty five with a hundred and ninety five points, according to our architectural design review in code section fourteen dash eight point seven. Moving along to access, traffic and parking. A traffic impact analysis was conducted by NV five engineers and consultants. They determined the capacity was sufficient to accommodate the proposed development. Development review team reviewer and a representative from NMDOT District Five agreed with this conclusion. Looking at the circulation plan up on the screen here, you can see there's quite a few ingress egress driveways. This was designed to promote circulation efficiency for this distribution warehouse. So if we look at it as the site exists right now, the top being the north, as for this reference, that eastern driveway is meant only for company vehicles. That is connected to a one-way driveway to the north driveway. There's a queuing area for loading. This would allow vans for the company vehicles to load and not spill out or have a large impact on Aviation Drive or Hart Road in doing so. They would then leave only by Aviation Drive once they are loaded. That southern parking lot in this case, the second driveway on the south of the site is for the parking of employees and visitors. And finally, that third driveway along the south is strictly for freight uses in the case of emergency vehicle access. There is a driveway that connects the two, that freight driveway and the northern driveway in aviation in the case of emergency access. This project exceeds parking requirements with a hundred and thirty one spaces, a hundred and twenty five were required by code, along with sixteen additional spaces in that loading area to the north under the canopy. As for bike infrastructure, Hart Road has a designated bike lane and the lot is proposed to have twelve bike spaces. Transiting to other areas of DRT review, terrain management. The terrain of the site slopes gradually from north to southwest, an overall change of fifteen feet. There are no flood plains or slopes greater than thirty percent on the slight, on the site, excuse me. As for open space, lighting and signage, the project exceeds the requirement of thirty percent. As I said previously, there is infrastructure for passive stormwater harvesting, which brought that down to thirty percent from fifty percent. Lighting meets photometric requirements and any signage will be reviewed at time of building permit. The applicant has not requested any variances with his application. Onto water and sewer, sewer connections, the proposed development would connect to city services for both. There's existing infrastructure on the map here showing blue along Hart Road, Hart Road and Aviation Drive. There are also sewer lines, there's one sewer line along Hart Road shown by that green line that was recently added with adjacent development. The water budget for this warehouse use and affiliated landscaping was approved by city water DRT staff. Moving along to archaeology and fire prevention, our business park received an archaeological clearance at the time of the business park's creation in two thousand eight. No significant sites were found on this property. As for fire prevention, this proposed development implies with International Fire Code two thousand, two thousand twenty one. If approved, it will also be equipped with an automatic fire suppression system or new hydrants, along with the two existing hydrants along Hart Road. Landscaping plan shown on the screen is balanced with five hundred and ninety two shrubbery dispersed across the property. Proposed bonding areas are all landscaped, trees are distributed throughout the parking lots and landscaping is adequately irrigated. The applicant did request an alternative means of compliance for the quantity of trees required by code section SFCC fourteen dash eight point four. The reduction was requested at fifty percent. However, with the existing trees remaining on site, it is actually a thirty eight percent reduction. So instead of two hundred and ninety six required, two hundred and ninety six trees, that being a hundred and eighty nine are spread throughout the property, which is ultimately healthier for the tree canopy when it reaches full maturity. Finally, we're along to the development criteria. While the applicant response is up on the screen here, I'll be focused on my analysis as the staff. Criterion one, as you can see in both the applicant and staff criteria, chapter fourteen, code section, let's see, code section two point three C one authorizes the planning commission to review and approve or disapprove development plans. Moving along to criterion two, that approving the development plan will not adversely affect the public interest. We have found that yes, it will not adversely affect the public interest. Subject to the recommended conditions of approval, the proposed development plan complies with SFCC chapter fourteen and would not adversely affect public interest. The proposed distribution warehouse development plan serves the public's interest. Moving on to criterion three, that the use in any associated buildings are compatible with and adaptable to buildings, structures and uses of the abutting property and other properties in the vicinity of the premises under consideration. In this case, business parks set out here as it is, is meant to stop any friction between industrial uses and other uses in our community. So in this case, it was created to accommodate light industrial uses ranging from manufacturing to storage, warehousing, distribution and other processing uses in that area. One motion will be required in this case, approve or deny the development plan, case twenty twenty four nine three one eight, subject to the conditions of approval and technical corrections recommended by staff. The staff does recommend approval with conditions. Thank you. Madam Chair, I will take any questions from the commissioners as of right now.
Are there any clarifying questions? No? Okay, we'll move on to the applicant.
Madam Chair.
Raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Toria Dalton, New Mexico Land Solutions LLC, nine fifteen Mercer Street, Santa Fe, New Mexico, eight seven five.
Do you solemnly, solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury? Madam Chair, the applicant's warrant.
So, good evening, members of the commission and staff. First of all, I would like to thank Carly for that very thorough and descriptive presentation. I feel like I do have a presentation to show, however, I'm going to set it aside and go ahead and stand for questions. I do want to say that we are in agreement with all staff conditions of approval. And based on any questions, I'm happy to bring up my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Morando?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not incredibly relevant, but still something I was interested in an application to finish that's on the precast concrete panels. Is indicated, seemed essentially a one coat texture coating paint, is that right?
It's more of, Commissioner Moreno, it's more of a, an adobe brownish color. It may look kind of odd on the.
Question isn't about color, but the material itself. This is a one coat paint, yes, a texture coating?
Oh, sorry about that, Commissioner Moreno, yes, you're correct.
It is not in our purview, but just as a unsolicited suggestion, I would suggest the applicant, if you're going to use the precast panels, be great to maybe just use the raw concrete. That one coat coating really does not hold up well.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. We will keep that in mind and I will share that with my client. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Caplan?
Thank you. I had a question about the four entrances and ingress and egresses. And if that was something that was code required or design request? And if so, why the one out onto Aviation Drive? And I guess I'll put it in a little bit of a bigger context of as this whole area, which heads out to our airport, is getting developed with industrial. So some of this is specific, but also maybe a little bit for staff, like how is that being assessed for all the developments starting to come in in a distribution warehouse that's going to be having a lot of, you know, if that's your egress for all your delivery vans or whatever is going, why two and not just use Hart Road?
So Commissioner Caplan, the, the design is by the user. So it's not a city code requirement. And the requirement is actually to alleviate traffic that would come into Hart Road eventually with the subdivision. So we want to alleviate the vans and van traffic and truck traffic. So we want to alleviate the vans and van traffic and truck traffic within the subdivision. This would allow, you know, the deliveries or to take place off of Aviation. So in reality, more of the traffic leaving the site will take a right into the city city jurisdiction to their to their subject addresses. So I believe, you know, the traffic going towards the airport wouldn't, this this site wouldn't be, wouldn't affect that. And is also in line with the TIA that was approved and reviewed by staff.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move to the public comment section. Is anyone here present tonight that would like to comment on this project? So come forward, please. No one appears to be here that would like to comment. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Currently, I don't see anyone with their hands raised. If anyone is on Zoom who would like to provide public comment for the 4400 Hart Road Development Plan, please raise their hand. I see no hands raised.
Thank you. So at this point, we'll close the public comment. And we'll move to comments of the commission. Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
For case 2024 9318 and 4400 Hart Road Development Plan, I'd like to make a motion for approval with the adoption of staff's requirements.
Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Miranda?
Yes.
Commissioner Caplan?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the item has been approved.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, next we'll move to case number 2024 8898 214 Camino de los Marques rezoning. And I'm going to turn the chair over to Commissioner Smith. I'm recusing myself from this case. I am a New Mexico Arts Commissioner appointed by the governor. And each year, the Arts Commission is invited to an event at the Santa Fe Opera, which occurs two nights before opening night. It consists of a dinner and tickets to the dress rehearsal of the opening night opera. I've been invited three times and have attended the last two years. Even though I attend the event as a New Mexico Arts Commissioner, technically, this could be considered a gift from the opera. I've consulted with the Santa Fe City Attorney's Office on this issue. Based on their advice, I'll recuse myself from this case in order to avoid any appearance of inferiority and ensure public confidence in decisions of this commission. Thank you.
Enjoy your time. Okay, we will now hear a case 2024 8898 214 Camino de los Marques rezoning. Staff.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Janice Beletnikoff with the planning or land use and planning department.
Um, if there's someone in the IT that can come out and oh, and assist with getting the
Evening. Janice Beletnikoff with the land use and planning department. The docket I have for you this evening is a rezoning request, case number 2024-8898 214 Camino de los Marques rezoning. This is a request to rezone a 2.5 acre property from R21 PUD. That's residential 21 dwellings per acre planned unit development zoning to R29, which is residential 29 dwellings per acre. And also to dissolve the existing PUD. The agent is Jenkins Gavin, Inc. And the applicant is the Santa Fe Opera. They'll be presenting. Here we have the location and vicinity maps to get you situated. And see the aerial post in showing subject property. The archaeological districts that apply here are both the suburban archaeological review district and the river and trails archaeological review district. Legal lot of record was provided with the application by the applicant. This was established in 1982. And a development plan was approved by the city for a 50-unit apartment complex. It's referred to as the Axton Apartments. I'll go over a bit of the zoning history here because it's interesting. In 1962, the parcel was zone A1, which is a single-family type of zone district. But in 1962, ordinance 196219 granted a special permit for the Santa Fe Women's Club and Library Association as a non-conforming use, specifically listing that it would allow clubhouse, meeting rooms, et cetera. This was never built. It also established the R5 zoning on this parcel, which is a higher density, single-family zone. In 1971, another ordinance came along. The zoning at that time was R5, as had been established in the prior ordinance. But ordinance 197116 amended this ordinance rather than replacing it. And this served to establish a new zone district, RM1 PUD zoning. This is for multifamily planned unit developments. In 1987, the zoning was RM21 PUD, which is multifamily, 21 dwelling units per acre planned unit development, and that's its current zoning. The current zoning with R21 PUD is bounded on all sides by other zone districts. It's bounded by C1, C2, R5 and R3 zones. So our code groups several zone districts together for some of its purposes. And the purpose that's that is listed for the group containing R10, R12, R21 and R29 zone districts is to make available a variety of dwelling unit types to serve a wide range of household needs at medium and high-density levels. So that shows the intention of this zone district that's in place. So in addition to the current zoning, we also always consider the general plan. So the 1999 general plan in respect to this parcel designated it on the future land use map as high-density residential. This grouping on the future land use map is it allows for 12 to 29 dwelling units per acre. So that is a fairly high density. And it specifically provides for apartments, condominiums and other forms of multifamily housing. This is a closer view or sorry, this is a further view zoomed out of the future land use map so that you can see that the HDR, high-density residential residential district, it appears in a few different spots. You can see it in the orange coloring polygons there. In the 1999 general plan, this parcel was also included in an area designated as infill area, where redevelopment is encouraged within the city. So there's two areas in the in the general plan that speak to this policy for 4G1 states to promote infill residential development in the same historical pattern as has traditionally occurred to make more efficient use of existing infrastructure. And also in section 4.1, it states in both infill and future growth areas, the city must encourage higher densities of residential and commercial development rather than existing zoning often allows. Here are a few site photos of the existing Axton Apartment Building. Now we'll move on to the current proposal. As I mentioned before, the current proposal is a rezoning only. This is a request to rezone 2.5 acres from R21 PUD Zone District to R29 Zone District and to dissolve the existing PUD on the subject parcel. I wanted to clarify for the benefit of everybody here tonight and everybody tuning tuning in through Zoom that no new development is included in the current request. This is strictly a rezoning request to change the status of the zone district that applies to this property. That considered, future development cannot be considered in our analysis. The evaluation of the code criteria that we'll go through here tonight is strictly limited to the merits of the rezoning request alone. The applicant did, however, include in the application materials a conceptual plan for an 83-unit apartment complex. This is for illustrative purposes only. It's a showing the possibility of what could be built here if the new zone district were successfully applied. And I wanted to also also mention here that any new development on this property would require a separate discretionary review process. It would most likely be a development plan in this case. And as you know, that requires its own process and hearings. So I thought it would take a second to review what a planned unit development is, since we would be removing the planned unit development status on this parcel if the applicant is successful in their request. Generally speaking, a planned unit development is an overlay onto a property where where we can impose different requirements, such as greater restrictions than the underlying zone district allows. Our code does not describe this in a really great way. It's not very clear in our code what a PUD is meant for here. But generally speaking, it allows the creation of planned districts that allow and encourage innovative site planning and design to ensure that each planned unit development compatibly integrates with development on adjoining properties. So its purpose is to create harmonious development and also sometimes to apply additional regulations or requirements to development on those PUDs. This has kind of been phased out over the decades. Most applicants these days prefer to use a master plan for this same purpose rather than the PUDs. So this is one of our remaining artifact ones in the city. So for this particular property, the ordinance in 1971 created the PUD on this and some other adjacent properties, very close into it, to change the zoning. This was in order to accommodate multifamily housing in this area. But it didn't impose any requirements or special standards for the development within the PUD. So it's an interesting one because we normally would refer to it to see what extra requirements must be met, but it contains none. Also, I wanted to mention that because of this PUD, having been adopted or approved and adopted onto the site, higher density, in other words, multifamily development, has been anticipated at this location since at least 1971. And further, the 1999 general plan contemplated higher density here as well, identifying and designating this property as an appropriate location for allowing up to 29 dwelling units per acre. As a reminder, it's currently at 21. So here's a comparison for the current and the proposed zone districts in regard to our dimensional standards that we require in the city of Santa Fe. On the top row, you'll see there's the R21 Zone District and the bottom row is the proposed Zone District, R29. The only real difference here with our dimensional standards as far as density, lot size, maximum height, percentage lot coverage and open space required is the density. Now, they both actually allow 10 dwelling units per acre currently, whether you're R21 or you're R29. However, with the development plan and going through that discretionary review process, which also, by the way, typically includes conditions of approval, you can get up to 21 dwelling units per acre for the R21 and up to 29 with the R29 Zone District. So for a 2.5 acre property such as this, rezoning to R29 in this case would allow for a possible 72 dwelling units. A 15% density bonus can also be requested if affordable housing obligations are met for the Santa Fe Homes Program. The ENN and public notice requirements have been satisfied per the code. The ENN early neighborhood notification meeting was held via Zoom on July 30th of 2024. There were many respondents and primary concerns of the attendees regarded impacts or sorry, were related to impacts on traffic in the area, impacts to parking availability in the neighborhood, noise impacts at various times of the day, visual impacts from possible future architectural character and impacts to views from future development if the height were maxed out per the zone district. Public notice requirements were also satisfied. The signs were posted on site and mailers sent out on November 20th of this year. And this included certified mail to properties within 100 feet. So now I'll walk you through the staff's application of the code criteria to this proposal. And I'll reach or read each criterion verbatim so that we know exactly what was analyzed. So criterion one or rezonings requires that all or more of the following conditions exist. One, there was a mistake in the original zoning. Two, there has been a change in the surrounding area altering the character of the neighborhood to such an extent as to justify the change. to such an extent as to justify the change in zoning. Or three, a different use category is more advantageous to the community as articulated in the general plan or other adopted city plans. Staff finds that no mistake was made in applying the current R21 PUD Zone District. In 1999, the general plan classified this property within the high-density residential grouping. This actually provides for even greater density than currently exists on the property or that can be allowed in the R21 Zone District if that were maxed out. This allows for up to 29 dwelling units per acre. The current zoning is well within this range, and the proposed R29 Zone District would also comply with this range in the future land-use map. And further, I wanted to mention again that the general plan encourages infill development at this site. The proposed R29 zoning would better achieve the general plan's intention for higher-density residential development and infill in this area. For section two, staff finds that the character of the neighborhood has not changed to such an extent as to justify changing the zoning. Based on historical aerial photography and our analysis of the decades via aerial, the neighborhood has remained largely the same. It's a mix of land uses and a pattern of land development that has remained stable since at least 1992. Section three of this criterion, staff finds that a different category, in this case, the R29 Zone District, would allow for greater density and therefore be more advantageous in that it will enhance compliance with the general plan. Specifically, the themes and policies that would be advanced here are those relating to higher densities, the compact urban form, infill as growth management, and allowing for a different, or use of different housing types, sorry, allowing for a mix of different housing types. And further, we find that allowing density at this, higher density at this site could incentivize infill redevelopment, and this would be located in close proximity to employment, services, transit, and utilize the existing infrastructure rather than building out into Criterion two requires that all rezoning requirements of chapter 14 have been met. This has two parts to it, and the first is section 14-3.1, which includes the applicable general provisions. This is largely housekeeping items, such as the authority to file the application, ease, and public notice. And then section 14-3.5 is the rezoning section of our code, and that doesn't include just the criteria, but also the provisions for these processes and the procedures. Staff finds that all of the requirements have been met in this process. Criterion three requires that the rezoning is consistent with the applicable policies of the general plan, including the future land-use map. So it's important that these two have been mentioned specifically, but in considering the general plan, I wanted to begin with a caveat. The code does not allow for the consideration of factors related to potential future development of the subject property as part of a rezoning analysis, either in relation to the code criteria consistency or the policies of the general plan. So I wanted to remind you here that we cannot consider possible economic impacts of a future development, the possible style of construction or architecture, the possible provision of affordable housing, or the possible type of users that would be served by a future development. Here, we have to limit our analysis only to the zoning district. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning aligns with the applicable policies of the general plan, as I mentioned before, including the future land-use map, as is required by this criterion. The R29 Zone District would allow for greater density in an area already identified or accommodating higher-density residential. And also, it would allow for a mix of housing types, apartments, condominiums, and other forms of multifamily housing. The 29 dwelling units per acre could advance the goals or policies by providing the mix of housing types essentially related to economics here. At a density that high, it's basically too dense to develop with single-family homes. Typically, for most developers, that wouldn't pencil out. So having the higher density be allowed here would encourage that the higher density may actually get built someday. So the rezoning could also facilitate infill development at this site, and I mentioned the existing infrastructure. We'll talk more about infrastructure in another criterion, but also wanted to mention here that the reason the general plan encourages infill development within the city limits is to reduce urban sprawl and the need for greenfield development. Criterion four requires that the amount of land proposed for rezoning and the proposed use for the land is consistent with city policies regarding the provision of urban land sufficient to meet the amount, the rate, and the geographic location of the growth of the city. Since this parcel is 2.5 acres, staff finds that this is a substantial amount of land in a central neighborhood of our city, and it's actually one of the largest parcels in the area. The requested density at 29 dwelling units per acre represents a significant contribution to the provision of housing units if the density were to be maximized in this location. And regarding specifically the geographic location, staff finds that rezoning this subject parcel could provide for housing needs in the center of the city, where the general plan has intended for it to be located. Infrastructure already exists, and it would alleviate pressure to accommodate such growth if it were relocated to the edges of our city. Criterion five, I just mentioned the infrastructure requirements here. This one was especially important to our analysis. It requires that the existing and the proposed infrastructure, such as our street system, sewer and water lines, and public facilities, such as fire stations and parks, will be able to accommodate the impacts of the proposed development. So as per usual, we referred out this proposal to our city DRT members. These are our infrastructure, facility, and service providers. All the DRT, excuse me, all the DRT members responded that the existing infrastructure and services can accommodate the impacts of this amount of proposed new density in this location. However, the city wastewater division responded that they objected to the proposed rezoning due to the potential for the new density to exacerbate existing deficiencies in the sewer line to the subject property as well as its associated manhole. The city engineer stated that the infrastructure could not accommodate the impacts of any additional density at this time, since any new inputs could cause a failure in the system. So such, this division will not approve any new density without the applicant first addressing the deficiencies. Also, I wanted to mention that Mr. Stan Holland from the wastewater division is here today if you have questions for him following this presentation. So considering this situation and the findings of that DRT analysis, the applicant worked directly with the city wastewater division to provide for the line and manhole to be repaired before any demolition or new development can commence on this site. That is regardless of ownership. It would apply if the rezoning were approved and anybody wanted to build anything on it in the future. So to ensure that the work is completed at the property regardless of future ownership, the applicant has submitted funds in escrow to cover the cost of the work. There's also an additional buffer in case there is an overage, and they also would warranty the work. The city will issue the necessary permits and inspect the finished repairs, but the applicant must actually do the work. If the rezoning is approved, the work will have to be done by the applicant, or the city can then access those funds to have the work completed at a time that suits the city. So given the contractual obligation of the escrow agreement to address the infrastructure deficiency and the security of the financial guarantee that was submitted to ensure its completion, the proposed rezoning can meet this criterion. And finally, criterion six requires that unless the proposed change is consistent with applicable general plan policies, the planning commission and the governing body shall not recommend or approve any rezoning, the practical effect of which is to: A) allow uses or a change in character significantly different from or inconsistent with the prevailing use and character in the area; B) affect an area of less than 2 acres unless adjusting boundaries between districts; or C) benefit one or a few landowners at the expense of the surrounding landowners or general public. In response to this, staff finds that the proposed change is consistent with the applicable general plan policies and themes, as I described earlier. First, regarding the typical use and character, this neighborhood contains a mix of single-family, multifamily, and low-intensity commercial developments. The density increased to R29 is consistent with the density established in the general plan and the future land-use map. As I mentioned before, the property is 2.5 acres, which exceeds the 2-acre threshold. And finally, staff finds that the proposed rezoning would not take place at the expense of surrounding landowners or the general public, as this neighborhood already contains and has contained for decades multifamily developments at a density greater than single-family homes, and the potential for infill development resulting from the proposed rezoning could benefit the general public because it would increase compliance with the general plan. That said, I wanted to mention a note about the character. The height, massing, siting, any of those elements of the character of future development on this property will be subject to the applicable discretionary review processes and must meet all criteria related to compatibility with the existing development in this neighborhood. A parcel of this size at 2.5 acres has the potential to significantly influence neighborhood character. So when the subject property is redeveloped at some point in the future, special considerations should be given to neighborhood character, visual buffering, and screening the development from the low-intensity, oh, sorry, low-density, single-family areas, particularly those along Galastaeo Avenue. Considering the code criteria analysis that I've described, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission approve case 2024-8898-214 Camino de los Marquez rezoning, including dissolution of the existing PUD. This would require one motion to approve or deny case 2024-8898-214 Camino de los Marquez rezoning, including dissolution of the existing PUD. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions if you have them.
Thank you very much.
I mean, it's always pretty straightforward. I just clicked on the link off the agenda. Man, I wrote like a big blank page here.
Did the?
Yeah. Do that again. I just, I canceled you out. Sorry. Join as panelists. There we go. Yeah. It's just thinking. There we go.
Thank you for your patience, commissioners. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Jenkins with Jenkins Gavin, also joined by Colleen Gavin and Lauren McAllister from our team, and also happy to be joined by several members of the Santa Fe Opera Board and staff.
Excuse me. It's very late.
Yes. Thank you.
Do you solemnly, do you solemnly declare, Jennifer, that the testimony you have in reference to this item that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, applicant has been sworn in.
My address is 130 Grant Avenue, Suite 101. So I am happy to be here this evening on behalf of the Santa Fe Opera in request for the rezone that Janice covered very thoroughly. So that is going to enable my presentation, I think, a little more quickly. And so, so I think we all know where the subject property is. It's a two-and-a-half-acre parcel on Camino de los Marquez, the current home of the 50-unit accident apartments. So I'm just going to start with a little bit of background. This is kind of the why. Why are we here? Why was this request brought before City of Santa Fe in this body? So the accident apartments were built quite a while ago. It's an aging property. It was built back in the early 80s. And then in 2001, the opera acquired the property with the one intention of housing their technical apprentices. The opera hosts 120 full singing apprentices every season. It's an incredibly robust program. Sorry. Thank you. It's an incredibly robust apprentice program that you're going to hear a little bit more about this evening. And so with the acquisition of this property, they were able to house their technical apprentices. However, their singing apprentices were kind of having to seek housing within the Santa Fe market, within the community. And historically, that was fine. And but in the last few years, kind of in our post-COVID reality, securing housing for their singing apprentices has proven to be increasingly challenging and cost prohibitive. So as the opera looked at what can we do? How can we solve, how can we solve this problem? Looking at a lot of different options and looking at this asset and that what make the most sense from, for a lot of different reasons, from a cost standpoint and in terms of their own fiscal responsibility as an organization, it was determined that redeveloping this property, which was sort of begging for it anyway, you know, deferred maintenance in an aging facility. And so we assessed and determined that the site could accommodate 83 units, which would necessitate a rezoned from R21 to the R29. And this will enable the opera to be utterly self-sufficient. It's really important, utterly self-sufficient, in housing their apprentices every single season. They can house every single one. What this means is Santa Fe Opera is not out in the community competing for housing. That is a win-win if I've ever seen one. So and as Janice pointed out, these factors are not the basis for your analysis and assessment of this rezon application. It's the why. And we feel like we are here to be fully transparent about what is motivating this request. And but I'm going to leave that there because what we're really here to talk about is we're here to talk about the general plan and how this request aligns with that document. Really why we're here. So as, as Ms. Velenikoff pointed out, the property land use designation in the city's general plan calls for a range of density from 12 to 29 dwelling units per acre. The city code says you can't rezon property unless it complies with the general. If it didn't, then you got to come in with a general plan amendment, right? So that is, that is the first litmus test. Does your request comply with the city's map? And we have the existing zoning of the R21 for this property, as well as the property across the street. Got another little, another little pocket of R21, a little to the northwest. And as you can see, this is a really diverse mixed-use neighborhood. It's fantastic. We have single-family residential. We have multifamily residential directly next door. And C1 zoning, as you might recall, C1 zoning, which is typically office zoning, does permit multifamily development at 21 dwellings per acre as well. So right next door to the west, we have also a multifamily condominium community. And then we have the red, of course, is C2. That's our primary commercial zoning district. And we have shopping center zoning. This is the CVS shopping center here in the pink. And then we have, of course, all the office zoning along Luisa Street. So again, a really diverse mixed-use neighborhood. So let's talk about how this project complies with the general plan. Again, I think Ms. Velenikoff covered it very thoroughly. As I already mentioned, the future land use map, first and foremost. So we have some general themes laid out in the general plan. We have quality of life. The reinvestment and redevelopment of an aging property is definitely enhancement of the quality of life, not only for the residents, but for the neighborhood as a whole. Transportation alternatives. You could live here and not own a car. Be really easy. There are train stations down the street. The bus is next door. You can walk to services, groceries, employment, trails, parks, recreation centers. It's all there. It is all there. So when we talk about wanting to encourage walkability in our community, this is exactly what we're talking about. Sustainable growth. We all know that infill is sustainable. It reduces our carbon footprint. So we're reducing car trips. We're using, maximizing the efficiencies of existing infrastructure. Multifamily housing has a much smaller carbon footprint than single-family. It's documented. Then we have our urban form. The general plan, I mean, I was trying to go through the general plan and find all the references. I just stopped. I was like, there's too many. You can't, you know, I can't cite every reference to the desirability of a compact urban form because it's, it's voluminous. Then we have some guiding policies. Concentrate population of greater density densities with centrally located neighborhood centers to encourage pedestrian-scale development, reduce auto dependence, and provide central transit. Moda compact urban form. There it is again. Identify special infill sites that should develop at densities greater than existing zoning allows. This site is identified in the general plan as an infill site. We have our land use framework. Again, the compact urban form. A mix of housing types in all neighborhoods. And the beauty of this neighborhood is this neighborhood is already doing that. It's already doing that. And this is aligning because we are not changing the housing type. We are looking to redevelop an existing multifamily community with a new multifamily community. And transit supportive development. As I mentioned, great access to alternative modes of transportation at this site. So with respect to growth management, as Ms. Velenikoff stated, infill is a really key growth management method. It says in both infill and future growth areas, the city must encourage higher densities of residential and commercial development in existing zoning office. Property is designated as an infill area, supports the plan's emphasis on higher densities and compact urban, maximizes land use and infrastructure efficiencies in an urban setting, supports walkability and transit-oriented development, and reduces urban sprawl. Do not need to be developing this at our edges. Need to be developing in our core. So looking at that, so here's our, here's our subject parcel. So the blue lines are bus routes. And the pink is also that, I believe that the pink is the parking right. We have Salvador Perez Park and Recreation Center and their dog park. We've got the Rose Park. We have shopping. We have employment. We have the rail trail. We have the rail runner bus stop, I mean, train stop. It is, it is all here. Lastly, as was stated thoroughly in your staff report and in the previous presentation, this is the sewer line, problematic antique sewer line, but I'd like to call it, in Camino de los Marquez. So it's this manhole right here at this intersection of the two sewer lines that appears to have been built around 1939 and still there. And it's built out of rock. I've heard it's actually quite beautiful. It's like stacked rock. I didn't even know such a thing existed. So it's this manhole and then this, this little piece of upstream line that needs to be, needs to be replaced. So this is the manhole right here where the current project connects into that line. And so we have put up a financial guarantee. There is significant cash funds in escrow with the City of Santa Fe to cover the expense of replacing the, this area of the sewer line. And this will be conducted prior to any construction or any redevelopment moving forward, moving forward in the property. So with, with that, I would be happy to stand for any questions.
The commission. Questions? Proceed, please.
The sewer line. Can you just point out again what part of this is going to be replaced? And, and then secondarily, this.
It flows everything to the west. Yeah, it's, yeah, so this is.
Towards St. Francis Drive.
Exactly, exactly. So this manhole here.
Yep.
We're replacing that. That's the antique place. And then the line, the upstream line here.
Right there.
We're going to replace. This manhole appears to be fine, the one that we, we currently connect to.
And it continues on, the sewer line continues.
Yeah, it continues on all the way to Don Diego.
And then that way as well. So this little section in that manhole is a pretty significant improvement. It's going to affect a little, I'm sorry, my, I, my, I can't.
Yeah, it looks like so this community across the street flows into that line as well. This community flows into that line. Of course, the residents along Don Diego flow down into this line. So yes, it is, it is a huge, it's a huge community benefit.
Yeah, that's good. Mike, can I follow up with this? Can you speak to the request to dissolve the PUD? What the, what your request, I understand that it's sort of inspired.
So. When the, when the R, when R21 used to be called RM1 and was like for multifamily. So when that zoning was established, for some unknown reason, they made it a PUD. Normally, when you do a PUD, it's because you have some very specific design standards. You're like, we want to do something kind of unique and innovative. So we're going to attach this PUD to our zoning. We did that on Zia Station, right? So if that gives you any context. So it was a little bit of a mystery of why they decided the PUD because there weren't any special design standards called out in the ordinance. And so we don't need a PUD. And besides, there's no details about what it actually accomplishes. So we're just basically, this piece of property will just be straight R29 if that is the, you know, choice of this body and the governing body, without that PUD kind of overlay accompanying it. So we're fine with it. It's just, it doesn't really serve a purpose.
Yeah, that's all.
Questions, members?
Thank you. Hi. Do you have, do you have any photos of the existing property in your presentation?
No, I don't. Oh, I'm not sharing it.
We're not getting it yet. Sorry. It's.
Oh, no.
It's my doing. I had to ask that question.
Okay.
There we go. It's all, it's all two-story?
Yes, it's all two-story.
And the R5 section is, there's one section bordering across the street that's R5.
Yeah. So, so across the street on Camino de los Marquez is also R21. There's a, there's a condominium, a two-story condominium project, kind of, that was part, I think, it looks like that was all zoned at the same time. Ages ago. And then as you go east of here, that's where you get in along Galastaeo. That's where you get into the R5 zoning, moving east from this site and then going kind of up, going up Don Diego, you would hit some R5 as well.
Thank you.
Your presentation, you talked about convenience, which I'm very aware, yes, walk, there goes, so forth, arts and such. And you talked about it for the use of the general public, but you also mentioned in your presentation that these, this property was only to be used by the apprentice. Is that correct?
So that's a great question, Commissioner, Commissioner Reeland and Chair Smith. So during the, the opera season runs around six months. So during that time period, usually, you know, starting March through September, to the end of August, then yes, the property would be used by the, the apprentices. And then in the off-season, there will be units available to the general public, you know, for six-month leases. So this is something that historically the opera has had great partnerships, whether it was traveling nurses or educational institutions who have professors coming in for short stents or others who just needed that option of a shorter term, of a shorter-term lease. Somebody may be just moving to Santa Fe and needs to place the land while they, you know, seek out their permanent housing. So it's, so it's a hybrid of, of, you know, half the year dedicated for apprentice housing and the other half a year housing made available to the public.
Do you have any statistics on the rent, rent rates that you guys have right now as far as when it's in off-season? Is it fully housed? Is it being utilized by the public?
Yes, yes. We actually have 11 units right now that are actually long-term rentals that, that have been there for decades, essentially. And when they, when the opera acquired the property, there were a handful of residents they allowed to remain. And, and they have, they have been there ever since. And but I don't, and then sometimes during the off-season, there might be a, you know, a visiting staff person or something who might also, you know, visiting the opera who might also need to, you know, reside there. Yeah, they've had quite a few, but I, I don't have exact numbers, but they definitely are used. They do not do short-term rentals, like any kind of Airbnb. They do not do that. So these are all, we're looking at, you know, multi-month leases in the off-season.
So, and you also said, I understand that, you know, structures break down and so forth. And you said that there's been the building. How long has the opera been in ownership of this property? Are you aware of that?
Yeah, the opera bought the property in 2001. Yes. And the opera is absolutely actively maintaining the property. But at a certain point, sometimes things become somewhat of a money pit. You know, they looked at what it would cost to put air conditioning into the property. To retrofit air conditioning or put mini splits in 50 units, it was incredibly cost prohibitive. And then just the built environment did not, did not support that. So at a certain point, you know, there is significant investment over time in the maintenance of this property. But at, at a certain point, it makes, it makes more sense to, to build new.
So in my profession, I'm well aware of the lack of housing that we have in Santa Fe. And with the 11 residents that are there, is the opera considering allowing them to stay after redo?
That is probably not going to be possible to, because, because with the apprentice program, they need every, every square foot that, that they can get. The existing residents have already been notified. They will have two years to secure, to secure new housing. So we, we notified them very early in, in our process.
Okay. Well, the other one is more semantics of, you know, the development time and how you're going to house your apprentices during that development. Here for this body, so excuse that. That's it. Thank you very much.
I have one, one question. Just you are talking about 83 units, which doesn't assume the 15% affordable housing on top. Is that built, is that something that is part, I mean, I understand that's a little bit more, it should be legal with 58 units. But still, is that something that has been thought through in terms of different ways to make it happen?
So with respect to the affordable housing, as I believe, as everybody knows, Chair Smith, the options are to provide onsite housing or to pay the fee and loo. For this type of program, with the fact that we cannot offer long-term housing, it, to do, to do the affordable units onsite would not be feasible. And so we will be paying, we'll be paying the fee and loo.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you. In terms of the affordable housing incentives, you, you're discussing it in terms incentives that are currently in place. I don't know if you give consideration of how this might change with the possibly, uh, increased in phase one.
Yeah. And I mean, the increased incentives, um, are, are fantastic. But again, with this particular program and this particular user, it's, it's just, it's just not feasible. The, the, the point of the exercise, the why, as I talked about, why we are here, is we need to house one hundred and twenty apprentices. And we can just do it with the eighty three units.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hear from members of the public, please approach one by one and be sworn in.
Stephanie, uh, Stephanie Benanato, excuse me.
Please. Uh, and you state your address.
District two.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Yep, I do. I am opposed to this rezoning. And I think that you really need to consider what the general plan actually talks about. It talks about a high density zone that goes from R ten through R twenty nine. I don't really hear anything that says that you have to get to the R twenty nine, the highest of the dense zones. This is already an R twenty one zone, which is a lot for that area because really there's a lot of single family homes. It's mostly R five, there's some R twos. To talk about this as having a walkability, but there's no walkability from there to the opera. So to think that you're not going to have, um, increased carbon footprinting with a hundred and twenty people as opposed to however many are there now, let's say sixty, um, that's not actually true. Um, additionally, really, it is spot zoning. Because although it is higher than, bigger than two and a half acres, it is not touching in our twenty nine zone. And in order to rezone without being a spot zoning, it has to be touching at the same zoning that it's required or asking for. And I asked to rezone my property, which is right around the corner. And I was told that I couldn't because there were two houses between me and the next zone that I wanted to be. And unless they agreed, I had it touch that zone. So I don't see why the opera should be different. Additionally, it is really just benefiting the opera. We have heard over and over that it's absolutely necessary for their intern program. We've heard that there's, there are ten or eleven full time residents that aren't going to be there. There's not going to be affordable housing, um, on this property. They're going to pay a fee in lieu of. And, um, I know that we're not really talking about the actual proposal. But again, the, uh, if they do want an addition in height, and because this is about the general plan wanting more housing, more infill, if they want more height, there has to be affordable housing on the project. They don't get to pay fee in lieu of, it has to be on the project. I think you need to consider that when you are actually thinking about the rezone. And that's under, by the way, the criteria for that is on, under table fourteen seven two point one E, um, where they talk about what you can do in terms of increasing height. I don't really think it contributes to the community, if not our immediate, immediate community, because we already have huge traffic issues at that intersection of Don Diego and Camino de los Marquez. I live on Don Diego. It blocked, it backs up more than a block, a block and a half, two blocks from that intersection. There is often like kamikaze driving, getting from Cordova to Saint Francis Drive. Uh, there's gridlock on Saint Francis. And there's sewer problems a block away on Don Diego and Don Fernando. So I'm not sure. I mean, it's great that there'll be a better sewer line there, but I'm not sure that that increase won't affect the older parts of the line that they've been repairing a long time.
Stephanie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're out of deference to.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I, you didn't say two minutes and you didn't like go buzz buzz. And so I just kept going on.
It's okay.
You definitely caught us.
And, um, and I will put this in, into the record.
Thank you.
Uh, just, we will be putting a two limit, um, time, uh, and you can cede time if you have a standing, but you'd have to arrange that, um, with, uh, with us. Do we have a timekeeping?
So do we understand what, what we're saying is if you want to speak and you need six minutes and two other people will give you their time, you have six minutes. That's the math of it all. We don't, just trying to make sure everybody gets heard. And whoever is deferring needs to be identified.
Want to, do, do you want to swear?
No.
Do it one at a time.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Katie Singer, three ten Lomita Street.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I do. So I live on Lomita Street, which is a few blocks from the complex. Last summer, three parked cars were totaled on our short block. One car was owned by a person who rents a unit on Houghton Street. This unit has no off street parking, and so we have parkers on our street. The two houses on either side of the house I live in have no off street parking. Across from our house, the owner turned the house into an Airbnb. He blocked off the driveway and turned it into a patio. One house on Don Cubero, which, uh, is perpendicular to Lomita, has been remodeled for the past year. And some days, Don Cubero looks like a parking lot. And the intersections are very dangerous. Over the years, I have contacted the traffic department with requests for signage for parkers to leave sufficient space from driveways and to stop signs for safety. I've requested signage to ensure that residents who have no off street parking could have designated space to park. A city traffic engineer drove down our street a couple of months ago. I think she came twice. At the time, there were almost no cars parked on the street. And so she closed the case. What I'm here to say is that, like saying that people can walk to the grocery store, this is not due diligent review of the real traffic situation. So I am opposed to this rezoning.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair Smith? Would you permit me to make a statement before additional?
Please.
Just as a, I, I feel this might come up again and just, I, I just want to make clear something about what is being proposed and what will have to happen after this regardless, um, if they are approved. And that is that there would be no mechanism in this application for us to review traffic. We, we, we only have so much power. We're, we're just to reflect the code. We have to look at the merits of if this should be changed from one thing to another within its zoning. Traffic and more finite issues that impact the property. When a development plan would go through, that is the time and really the only time that traffic analysis could be done. So you're, you're welcome. We want to hear your comment, but honestly, if you're going to talk about things that would be in a traffic study or would be in the architecture or the height of the building, I don't think you would be using your time effectively, at least to me. And so I'm just trying to be straightforward about what, how this might be most effective. Thank you.
Swear.
Chair Smith, just, just one extra comment, just for the benefit of the public. Also, the planning commission is a recommending body, um, relative to rezonings. And so this will have to be heard again by the governing body, who will, who will take into consideration the planning commission recommendation and the comments given at that hearing as well. So it won't be just this hearing where this topic is considered, but also at the city council meeting, which is yet to be scheduled.
Swear.
State your name and address for the record.
Cindy Cat, two oh seven Camino de los Marquez.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
City. I do understand your, but I do feel that at some point that does need to come up because I want to know also, like, what kind of improvements is the city going to have to do to accommodate the type of traffic that's going to go through, not just Marquez, but Don Diego, Galileo, also the roundabout that's there, the road between Cordova and, you know, where Maria's is and Don Diego. And, you know, I know they talked about walkability. Well, at some point, yeah, there is employment in that area. But how are they going to get there? They can't walk to the opera. They can't walk, you know, to different places. So I think that I am opposed to this because I do feel that there are a lot of things that need to be considered before this is approved. A three story building in that neighborhood, I think that would just deter the environment that we've had. I've lived there for over thirty years. And I feel that it would just be a detriment to that area. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Anna Chavez Strong, and I'm nine four five Don Cubero Avenue.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Do. I would like to address the zoning request, uh, as being a first stage this new development. And my point of view, um, there's no stopping. Once it starts, it's a ball rolling, stop. And so even though it will go to committee later on, if it, if you guys approve it tonight, I feel like this is the first stage. This is where residents of, say, no, we don't want this. We don't want this. We have gathered signatures and I believe all have signatures that we've gathered. Um, there's things that you address such as, uh, not advantageous, uh, terms of an older structure. I live in a house that was built in nineteen forty seven, so does that mean that I should tear my place down? And I've put a lot of money into my property. I personally put a lot of money into that property. And I'd feel like, gee, this place was built in the sixties. That's a, to mine. So, um, I also feel like, um, the, um, there's already, you know, they talk about not wanting to, you know, you want the higher density. But it's almost as if you're turning a blind eye to the already, um, existing building in those outer areas. It's, it's huge development. So it's like, that's being totally ignored. So, um, another thing that the analysis that, that were put forth here, I don't think they take into account the impact on the neighborhood, on the individuals that are living there, have invested in their properties, that are maintaining them, they're paying the taxes there. And it doesn't address the fact that, gosh, it's not, it's kicking these poor people that live in this place. They're not going to have a place to live. And it's, all it's going to do is provide some temporary housing and probably greater funds for the opera, as they'll get more on that temporary spacing. Um, also, the wastewater issue is huge. I live right there where that drain is, and I'm a block away. Am I timed up? Okay, well, thank you.
Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, McMartinez, seven twenty five Masia Road. I don't swear.
You, uh, solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I want to, uh, uh, I kind of grew up and messed around in that neighborhood or growing up here in Santa Fe, but I always wanted to talk about compatibility. Uh, compatibility is, is perfect the way it is now. The zoning, having a zoning rechange is, is completely out of step of what's compatibility with the existing neighborhood. And I say existing neighborhood, that is darn, darn right smack in the middle of the neighborhood where this property is. And it's, it's lived by there for so long. Changing the, changing the zoning is going to change the height. We know that it's going to come up later on. It's going to change the, the character of the neighborhood. You know, but they, they can read, it'd be demolished and rebuild it again. But the, but for it to be compatible with what is there now is very important to the neighborhoods and to the characters of, of that area there and Santa Fe itself, is, you know, that, that will just spread on further to, to where, uh, the restaurant is and the body is. That can go up higher too, because that's a C two zone, zone two. A lot of that whole area can change by just giving one area, a first, a first maybe step to, to start changing it. So I, I really suggest that you don't, uh, ask for the rezoning. Keep it as it is for the compatibility of that neighborhood and the character of that neighborhood. Because this is where we live in Santa Fe, where we have, we live with, with what is there. And I, I thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
God Roque, seven thirty Camino, Camino de los Santa Fe, San Francisco, seven five.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I do. Good evening, Chair Smith, Commissioners and Staff. I live in District Two, the same city council district. It's two fourteen Camino de los Marquez. So I frequently cycle or drive past from visiting CBS, A F U T O R D O S A. I've attended the Santa Fe Opera regularly since nineteen eighty eight. I've served on the board of directors since twenty twenty. Santa Fe Opera was recognized as the festival of the year at the twenty twenty International Opera Awards. It is world renowned artistically, attracting visitors from across the state, the nation and around the world every summer. Opera visitors inject what is estimated to be two hundred and fifty million dollars into the state's economy annually, support indirect jobs in tourism and hospitality, generate significant gross receipts tax revenue for the city of Santa Fe. Short, the opera is a vital part of the infrastructure that is Santa Fe today. For it to continue to produce celebrated summer festivals, the opera must address its seasonal housing needs. Making this rezoning request is doing so in a way that will also help address Santa Fe's chronic housing shortage by providing six month rentals outside the opera season. The city can therefore leverage the opera's housing needs, um, and produce additional housing at no cost to itself. I urge you to recommend the governing body approve this request, which conforms with all applicable code criteria. By adopting staff's recommendation to the planning commission, we will benefit the opera by allowing it to house technical and singing apprentices during the season, thus reducing competition for housing during that period. And you will benefit the city itself by increasing and diversifying available housing units overall, protecting the jobs and G R T revenues that flow directly and indirectly from the Santa Fe Opera. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Name is Margie Hicks and I live at ten forty one W Don Diego Avenue.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Yes. I've lived in the neighborhood for twenty five years. I'm right by the corner of, um, Camino de los Marquez and Don Diego. And about every two months, I see that sewer line in the center of the intersection being opened up and fixed. Also, I've asked the, about once a month, there's a T bone right at that corner. The city has done. The city has done nothing but, they put up three sidewalks instead of four. The one coming down from Camino de los Marquez, people run the light, T-bone people, nobody's been killed yet, but it happens a lot. Also, I know the people in the neighborhood. I have, I'm a hairdresser. I have clients who live in the condominiums across the street. They said after the opera is over, there's party city at the apartments. Lot of noise till late in the morning or wee hours of the morning. Okay, I love the opera. I go to the opening night. I've been doing that for 30 years. And I just have some questions. So they say, family, planning or whatever, who's going to build this place? And I heard it was going to be the same people that build the Capitol flats. And I know a young couple that were living there, and within one year, their rent was doubled. Also, I had a client years ago who knew that Mary Axton gave that property to the opera. She willed it to the opera. So they got it without any investment, as far as I know. I don't know them small particularly. And I think it's a worthy cause, yet at the same time, you're going to cut down trees, you're going to contribute to climate change, there's going to be all that carbon going back into the atmosphere. That intersection is a mess. It's never safe. I go out and tell the cops, well, another crash. Are you going to do anything about this intersection? No, because people speed through there and behave like idiots. And it's just going to make it more crowded for everybody living there. And yes, I like the ambiance. I like the opera, but this is a big question. And don't just, you know, run it through. Thank you.
Please state. What was your last name? I'm sorry. You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I'm a fan of the opera. But I do think during this process, I'm sorry, I do think during this process, we could communicate better, and I personally would volunteer to do that for whatever it's worth. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. I'll see you. I'm not sure we can do it that way, but.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Teresa Moore, 300 Camino de los Marquez.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please proceed.
I want to thank Mr. Chabin, who indicated that I could use the rest of the time. I'll do my best to be very efficient. In response to something that Commissioner Ryland asked of Ms. Jenkins, I just want to offer some anecdotal evidence, having a window that overlooks the Axton Apartments. During the off-season, my golly, I just don't see many cars. I don't see much activity. I don't see much occupancy. Now, that's not statistical, but I would imagine that the opera does have those statistics, and I would urge you to get them. In addition, I just want to offer that my family owns a home in the condominium complex to the east, which was built in, I want to say around 2012, well after the general plan was enacted. It was developed to somewhere around R12, R13, if such a thing were to exist. So the density on that side has not developed in concurrence with the general plan. And I guess I want to raise the question. Since the property across the street is zoned R21, I hear nothing about that being redeveloped. The property to the east has not been developed to the standards of the general plan in terms of density. I want to ask the question of whether that 24, 25-year-old future use plan map really still applies. In my opinion, the neighborhood is not developed in the way that that general plan perhaps foresaw. I love the opera too. I believe that the apprentices deserve, of course, to have quality housing. I'm just very concerned about the effects in the neighborhood. Ms. Jenkins indicated at the ENN, actually, and I believe this is almost a quote, that the property could not be developed to R29 standards without a third story. Now, I know that this is primarily zoning, but I just want to oppose that that really is an issue for the neighborhood. Am I still using Mr. Chabin's time? Thank you. So I do believe that the third story remains a major issue in your packet. You received petitions that included 180 signatures of neighbors from Camino de los Marquez largely to the north, but also a little bit to the south, objecting to the project because it really is out of scale of how the area has actually developed. I think that the immediately adjacent neighbors, such as my family, my neighbors and myself, could actually suffer loss of property value, especially depend, since we don't really know what would be developed there. And there is no commitment made as to what the setbacks would look like. There was a sketch of a planned view, but no commitment. So will we have access to natural light? That's a big question, perhaps more than views. I think that that was something that was mentioned at the ENN, simply wasn't captured in the summary that was presented tonight, and I would add it for your appraisal. So at the very least, I want to ask you to please, please require that any development of this property require the developer to collaborate with the neighbors to ensure that our concerns are satisfied. Thank you very much.
Simone Ward, I live at 300 Camino de los Marquez.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury? Please proceed.
My name is Simone Ward, and I live in the condominium properties that share the border with the Axton Apartments directly to the west. We, while we support the contribution of the Santa Fe Opera in our community and understand the need for solutions to their continued growth and success, we believe that this small neighborhood community will be negatively impacted by the changes proposed to this property. We have some short-term concerns around demolition and reconstruction of new buildings, heavy construction on the site that directly borders our condos, especially concerned about the abilities to directly maintain the current values that we share, and parking of construction employees, pardon me, heightened noise issues in a quiet neighborhood, lighting and safety of the construction site, as well as traffic that will be highly impacted. Long-term concerns include impact of a higher-density population in the small neighborhood, potential strain on infrastructure, reduced privacy, increased noise levels, the impact of additional lighting, and the potential of overcrowding if not properly planned. These long-term concerns will also impact our property values, and we do strenuously object to a third story, as my colleague just said, we would probably lose all natural life. We urge the parties to consider carefully the neighborhood concerns and respect the wishes of the existing community members. Our neighborhood is a special place that we all cherish, and it is crucial that the proposed redevelopment of the Axton Apartments properly align with the values and vision of the neighbors who call it home. Thanks for your consideration.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Los Alamos County.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Chairman Smith and the Planning Committee. Like I said, my name is Karen Henderson. I've been a member of the Santa Fe Opera Board for two years. Prior to being a board member for the opera, I was active for 15 years with the Santa Fe Opera Guild, a volunteer and engagement organization. The Santa Fe Opera is one of my favorite places on earth. I have been a licensed New Mexico professional engineer since 2006. Currently, my position with Los Alamos County is Senior Engineer for the Public Works Department. One of my roles is to review future developments for Los Alamos Planning Department. My tasks are specific to traffic and drainage impacts. I also inspect construction activities of developments, ensuring the construction is within the design standard of New Mexico, federal, and Los Alamos County. Additionally, my role is to verify that infrastructure that has been designed and built correctly prior to Los Alamos County. As someone who's deeply involved in development planning process, it was great interest of mine to learn that the Santa Fe Opera's project, I was pleased to see that the application meets the city of Santa Fe's general plan and all criteria has been met. It is good to see that the staff is recommending this to the Planning Commission. I would thoroughly urge you to recommend the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. State your name and address for the record.
Tracy Armigost, 10 Entrada Empanada, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87506.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Do. Hello, my name is Tracy Armigost, and I am the Production and Recruiting Coordinator at the Santa Fe Opera. I was a technical apprentice in 1988. For the past 26 years, I've been in my current role, where my main responsibility is facilitating the hiring and the programming for the technical apprentice program, as well as facilitating the hiring for the production staff. I have the honor of working very closely with all of the technical apprentices and their day-to-day training. As you can imagine, the schedule for a five-show repertory festival is very rigorous and involves many hours per week to produce. In the height of the season, we are quite literally a 24/7 operation. Each season, we hire 80 to 85 technical apprentices to work alongside our team of professional staff in all areas of production. These young professionals are focused and disciplined while carrying out highly complex and specialized work. They are an integral part of our operations, and we could not produce opera on our stage without them. In addition to providing the technical apprentices with career-making training, the opera assists them with low-cost housing at the Axton, so that they can do their best work, maximize their earnings, and enjoy their summers in Santa Fe. Of the, over the 4,100 technical apprentices that have been part of this program, many have gone on to contribute to the industry at major levels. In fact, former technical apprentices make up 60% of the opera's seasonal production staff, including the majority of our production department heads, who most of live in Santa Fe year-round. Another facet of the opera's training programs is the apprentice program for singers, another group that is equally valuable to the company, and we need to better assist with housing. Our apprentice singers typically secure their own homes or rooms in the community, and this group is greatly struggled with the challenges of finding their own housing and finding their own housing, which would be alleviated by the increasing capacity of the Axton Apartments. Thank you.
Raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carol Yeston, 831 Don Cabero Avenue. I would like to cede my time.
You would like to cede your time. To who?
Deborah Goldstein.
Can you please set the time for four minutes? Please raise your right hands. State your name and address for the record. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury? Please proceed.
Good evening. Can you hear me? It's mics. There is no question.
Madam, please address the chair.
Sorry. Thank you. Sorry, Chairman Smith. We all love the opera, and the apprentice program is wonderful. But holding them to a 1999 plan, that's the only plan we have. Does the rezoning here provide any affordable housing? We don't know what they're going to charge in the summer, based on somebody else's testimony. Doesn't appear that they're winter months. It doesn't appear that the winter months, Jenny rentals. Does rezoning change the character of the neighborhood? All the graphs and pictures you saw showed one block up north from the Axton Apartments, and go all the way from Marquez to Céu de Prata behind the storefronts. And that's all one, one, a single-story homes. I think they're calling it R5, whatever the zoning is for single-family, and also considering. Well, you missed a whole large section. To give you an idea, I like to throw, I have 150. I'm sorry. I like to throw summer parties, and now you all have my address. But I have anywhere from 100 to 150 people show up from the neighborhood. This is a real neighborhood, and it will change the character. These apartments were built in 1980, so they're not quite historic yet, but they do border on historic, historic neighborhood. To repair my sidewalk, I need historic permission. Does increasing the capacity of the apartments by roughly 165% change that character? You bet. And yes, there's commercial nearby, but as I was just explaining, that's kind of off to the south and off to the west. Everything to the east and the north is residential. If you saw, if you saw the map of the whole area, you would understand that. I noticed that my block, which is Don Cabero Avenue, between Don Diego and Galastaeo was totally omitted. It's like eight blocks of residential housing. Can the infrastructure handle additional 30 apartments? You had some testimony on that from the city, but what do the traffic studies say? I can't understand whether that's when you do the development or when you do it now, but one could assume the congestion would increase. What about electrical? I lost my power over three times this summer, and I don't have another 35 or 33 units. What about trash pickup? And what about water supply? And what is this about increasing the density in town so we don't go to the outskirts? Has anyone looked at South Santa Fe lately? Okay. And then, aren't there some other options? St. John's College, I understand, has dormitory rooms available. What about the closed campus on St. Michael's? There might be other options than intruding on our neighborhood. And do we have a guarantee the opera won't sell to the developer once it gets approval? Final, final note, and I don't know what my time looks like, is was the initial meeting properly noticed? I mean, the only way we found out about was the people who live within 300 feet, which probably included the street, got some notice and started spreading it around, and we all tied into the Zoom call. In the Zoom call, the whole development presentation was made, so therefore, most of my comments related to that, thinking there were one or two. Thank you very much.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Diana MacArthur, and I live at 221 Sena Street.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please proceed.
I want to speak a little bit about nostalgia. I'm 91 years old, and I still live, or now do live, in the same property where I was born, which is very near the property we're talking about. And as I grew up, there wasn't anything there. We were almost the end of the city, although Galastaeo would go way out to the country. I don't know if there was Court of a Road. There were, there were no businesses. The hospital hadn't been built, the medical facilities, and we were a sleepy town. And we were a sleepy town of about 15,000. So you see, things do change and they grow. And what you want to be sure of is that as it moves along, it is smart development. Now, I will also say that I am an emeritus member of the Port of the Santa Fe Opera. 30 years involvement there. I'm back because I'm supposed to remember the old days. And that's a good thing. And what I can say about the opera is that it has always done smart development. And it has been always very close. But once there was the little market, you could go and buy things. And now there is one of the casinos. Have always worked carefully with that community and will work well with this community. It's going to keep moving along and I hope that it will with smart development, which the opera can produce. Thank you.
Please change the time back to two minutes. Please raise your right hand, state your name and address for the record.
Hope Reed. I live at 321 West Cordova Road.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
My problem... Let's just think. My home is directly on the south side of this property. My backyard, beautiful backyard, faces the backyard of the Axton Apartments. It's nice, it's quiet, backyard to backyard, that's the way it should be. And now they're proposing to put in higher density. We're concerned about privacy on our property and noise. We're going to be like in a fishbowl. If they do a three-story unit, which is totally inappropriate, we don't want to look like the south side of Santa Fe where all that, those new apartments are going up right now. They're just really not appropriate for the area. And we're concerned about privacy and the noise. And we saw on that plan, a drive-through parking area would be directly on the back of our property. Instead of having backyard to backyard, we'd have backyard to another parking lot. And they come home late at night. And so it's cars coming in late at night, the beep-beeps of the cars locking and unlocking, and there's always the alarms that go off at night. All those things, they wake you up. We have bedrooms that face that way and we would be disturbed by that. And we feel it would really be inappropriate for the neighborhood, the look of the neighborhood, and the privacy and the congestion. Thank you.
Are there other members in the public? Are there people on Zoom who do have...
Thank you, yes. Chair Smith? Let's see, we do have a few hands raised on Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand and we will call on you in order. Before you speak, please state your name and be sworn in for the record. Thank you. Okay. I will have Jessie Grease allow you to talk. Please unmute yourself and state your name.
Jessie Grease. I live at 205 A West Cordova, directly backing up to the project.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
I do.
Please proceed.
The master plan seems to talk about advantage to the local community and the residents of that community. And I think this development offers none of that. It also doesn't create any new actual residents in the community. It creates short-term rentals, which I think is one of the things that's destroying the character of Santa Fe all over. That and three-story structures in old historic neighborhoods. The proposed use is short-term rental, six months or less. And it does not benefit the community. It certainly benefits a single business. It is a business that we all love. The opera is wonderful, but it is a business here in Santa Fe and that is who this plan benefits, not the neighborhood in any way. Tracy earlier said, you know, when the opera is running, it's a 24/7 operation. And she's right. And that's not what we want more of in our backyard. Sometimes it's wonderful and sometimes it's having, like having a frat house of very nice college students live right behind you. And it's not what we want to develop in the neighborhood. So I'm against the increase in zoning and I'm against the increase in height because of those reasons. It doesn't benefit the neighborhood.
Okay, I have Monica Perofsky. Please unmute yourself and state your name for the record.
Oh, hello. My name is Monica Perofsky. I live at 1004 Don Caballo Avenue, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87505. And I'm basically gonna just...
Ma'am, I need you to be sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
You solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Okay. And I'm basically gonna just say the same thing as the gentleman before me. I would be very supportive of changing the zoning on this property if it was to increase density for people who reside here rather than temporary housing. And I think that's what we really need. And so that's why I'm opposed to it. And then I also have traffic issues there at Don Diego and Camino de los Marquez. And then going over to Cordova, that traffic stop is really difficult at certain parts of the day. And if I may, my mom is here with me and she lives at 300 Camino de los Marquez, Unit 8. So exactly right next door and she would like to talk. But I'm not going to reiterate what the gentleman said before me, but those are my oppositions to it as well. Is that okay if I turn it over to her?
Yeah, Monica, as long as the next person states their name for the record and is sworn in. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mary Ann Perofsky. And I'm at 300 Camino de los Marquez, next to the property that we're viewing, you're interviewing right now. And I'll...
Are you ready to be sworn in?
Yes.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Yes, I just want to say that as a citizen, I find government a problem because they don't consider the citizen. We're who we are, living in that particular area and know best what's good for that area, not anyone else. Now... I do have a problem with the neighbor who is the opera house. And it'll be increased with mice and those rats that, pack rats, in the car engine causing damage. $300 for cleaning up my car and others who have their cars parked have also problems. And so I want this government of body here to consider the citizens and not always the business. Because the citizens pay taxes. Yeah, the business pays taxes. Well, will you do that? Will you consider the citizens in the neighborhood? We do elect you because we trust you to do the right thing for us. And I'm just wanting to say that. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And I have Cheryl Peterman. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and be sworn in before providing your testimony. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Peterman. I live at 318 Delgado Street, Santa Fe.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you have in reference to this item shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, and do so under the penalties of perjury?
Yes.
Please proceed.
I'm a member of the City of... I'm sorry. I'm a member of the Santa Fe Opera Board. I'm a licensed architect and I was the Planning and Zoning Director for the City of Dallas, Texas for four years. After my years in that job, I never suspected that I would ever attend another zoning hearing. Yet, here I am, speaking in support of this zoning case. I could tell you why the opera needs approval for the zoning case, but others have already told you why far more articulately than I could. I want to reiterate the reasons why from a planning standpoint, I would urge you to approve this case. First, Santa Fe is facing a housing shortage. Approval of zoning for this project is a way to achieve additional housing for Santa Fe. Next, the rezoning request aligns with the city's general plan themes and policies such as economic diversity, urban form, higher densities, and community-oriented development. Additionally, the project exemplifies key elements of the general plan land use framework, including compact urban form and the provision of a mix of housing types in all neighborhoods. As an infill site, the subject property is efficiently served by existing utility and roadway infrastructure. Also, the future land use map designates the property as high-density residential, which supports the requested R29 zoning. Finally, the general plan designates the subject property and surrounding area as an infill area. General Plan Section 4.1 states, "In both infill and future growth areas, the city must encourage higher densities of residential and commercial development than existing zoning often allows, to create efficient use of already existing roads and utilities, help ensure cost-efficient public transit, and provide the type of housing that will be in demand." In summary, this rezoning request not only complies with the property's future land use map designation of high-density residential, but it also embodies many of the plan's themes and policies with respect to infill, compact urban form, economic development, and support for the arts. I urge you to vote in favor of this case today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair Smith. If anyone else on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand now. If not, we will close the public hearing portion and public comment portion of this hearing. And Chair Smith, I see no other hands raised.
Thank you. Being a novice at this, we have a representative from the developer would like to speak again. He does not need to be sworn in again, am I correct? Please.
I'll remind you, you are under oath.
College, I remain under oath. Thank you, Chair Smith, I appreciate it. Just a few closing statements.
Mr. Chair, if I could address the commission just briefly, I think we need to close the public hearing if we're going to go back to the applicant.
You have all the power. So thank you, thank you very much. So we've heard about the why. Why this particular applicant is here before you with this particular request. We do that because it's context, it's information. I can't imagine coming into a hearing and not having a why for you. You would look at me sort of sideways, like, well... So we're here in full transparency about that. But you don't actually need to consider any of it. The only thing you need, and as Ms. Blintnikoff pointed out, should consider is the city code and the general plan. That's it. It makes this job and this analysis very clear and very straightforward. We look forward to the opportunity, should it present itself, to be back before this body, potentially with a project, to discuss and analyze and all that detail. We look forward to that opportunity. We're not there yet. First things first. So I really appreciate your time and attention. Be happy to stand for any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Just a few comments after hearing some of the public's response and the applicant's response. Just for clarification, the properties across the street, those are actually private residences, even though they are in a condo setting. So that's why you did not see them involved with this, I've known. Short-term rental, to my knowledge, is 30 days or less. So that's put out to everybody so you understand that. Property values, if any of you have a person that can predict property values, please give them my number. I would love to talk with them. So just as reference, and please reiterate what Commissioner Morondo stated, we're not here about height, we're not here about setbacks, anything like that. We are purely here for the zoning. Thank you.
And may I add, if I'm correct, and you can correct me, that that's all we can be.
Chair Smith?
Yeah, your motion.
Just want to make one hopefully brief comment before I make a motion here. Just the reasons why we're only considering it, I just want to give a little bit of context. Because you... There's been some expression of real concerns and I don't want it to seem like we're just putting that, pushing it aside on a technicality. It's very much because we do not have the information to evaluate it. If this, if they did do a third story, if they did increase the density to the 83 that they're proposing, it will be a development plan. In that development plan, there'll be a traffic study. That traffic study will be able to tell us what is actually happening with the traffic. Furthermore, though, when you talk about your views or in getting too close to the yard, lighting, all those things, we cannot evaluate it with a building that isn't there. I don't know, I wouldn't know what to do with it. So all of that is why we're looking at it and we have to look at it the way we are. And I just, I hope that explains this current... Thank you very much. With that, I would like to make a motion...
Case 2024-8898.
Thank you. And yes, case 2024-8898 for 214 Camino de los Marquez rezoning. I'd like to make a motion for approval with additions of staff's technical corrections.
Is there a second? Seconded? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, you gotta call him off. Gotta call him off, sorry.
I almost did it.
Chair Smith? Commissioner Reland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Capen?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Motion is approved. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? So just for all the, for the audience that is here, the general public, this is a recommendation that goes before the governing body. The final decision for this case, which is, will go before the governing body. Everybody here who had notice will get notice again and that's when the decision will be made, when it appears before the governing body. This particular decision here was a recommendation to the governing body, not an actual decision of the zoning.
Thank you, sir. Can we receive, excuse me, folks? Excuse me, folks, folks, could we be sort of quiet? Or quiet indeed? Thank you. Do we have staff communications?
Mr. Chair, we've already had staff communications.
Excuse me. Of course we have. Are there other matters to come before the commission? Hearing none. I don't need a motion to adjourn. I just, as I remember, do I need a motion? I think I just say we're done. By one chance. We're adjourned. Thank you.